All right, it's 6:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please unmute your screens and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand face right, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one and undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. And now you can mute your screens until we get to a place where you're going to want to talk. I'll entertain a motion to approve or amend the meeting agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Thanks, Leanna. Is there any comments? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Leanna?
Aye.
John? John, are you there? Do we? Art?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So I guess we lost John. Okay, now we're on to public comments on the agenda items. I don't have anything here. Did you get anything, Jackie? No?
I did not get anything.
Okay, thank you. And now we are at Student Board Member Introductions and Oath of Office. And I would just like to say that Aleah will be joining us for her second year as a student board member. And we will be swearing in Leanna and Leanna Woods and Desiree Makeumber if she shows up. And I just, because there are three of you, one one of the two new board members will be an alternate, but we would appreciate it if all three of you would come to every meeting so that we could have representation if someone isn't there. But I'll turn it over to Dana.
Yes, and at this point in time, Desiree is designated as our alternate, but we will keep her informed and in the loop and invited to all the meetings.
Okay.
So, Leanna, I would like to ask you to stand and raise your right hand.
Okay.
And repeat after me.
Okay.
I, Leanna Woods.
I, Leanna Woods.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Perform and discharge the duties of the office
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Of student board member.
Of student board member.
North Mason School District Board of Directors.
North Mason School District Board of Directors.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome and congratulations. And I see that Desiree has joined us. So Desiree, I would like to ask you to stand and take your oath of office. And raise your right hand. I, Desiree Makeumber. I hope I said that right. So, so repeat after me. I, Desiree. You're going to have to unmute yourself.
Oh.
There we go. I, Desiree Makeumber.
I, Desiree Makeumber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of laws in the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Perform and discharge
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of student board member.
Of student board member.
North Mason School District Board of Directors.
North Mason School District Board of Directors.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations to both of you and welcome. Sometime if you can drop by the district office, we have your oaths for you to sign. Thank you.
Welcome both, Leanna and Desiree, and welcome back, Aleah. So now we were at, we're at Student Board Member Comments already, so I'm going to ask Aleah if you would fill us in. Tell us how the beginning of the school year has gone and how it feels this year.
Um, so as you probably know, I am at Olympic College, so I still haven't started school actually, but I have been in contact with Mr. Kua and we have been planning stuff for DECA and I know that I studied on some of his classes and it seems to be going very smoothly and I'm excited for everyone to get back to school and get back to learning.
Cool. You'll be learning online at OC as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, good for you. And Leanna, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, not that I can think of.
Okay. How about you, Desiree? Anything that you would like to?
Um, yeah, actually, I've been in contact with the ASB/leadership teacher, Reichstein, and we have been just chatting about how elections for school office and stuff will go and we're just making a plan for that and just keeping in touch about like senior activities and sorts.
Okay. Sounds like stuff is happening.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're at Board Member Comments. John, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
You're on mute, John.
Am I mute now?
You're good.
Am I on?
You're on.
Oh, okay. Well, now that I'm on, I've got nothing to say.
Okay, thank you.
It's an exciting time, and I'm all for it.
Okay, thanks, John. How about you, Leanna?
Uh, well, I got to sit and listen to the parent comment at 6:00 PM last night. And I didn't hear a lot of no complaints really, just a few things that are gonna, they sound like they're going to be worked out. I'm a parent. Um, and I've started the online being a teacher and the first two days, yep, the first two days were everything I see on Facebook of all the other parents in every district and the screaming and the crying inside my head because we can't show that to our kid, right? So, we've done it and my son goes to school here at the, at the shop with me. This is my commercial kitchen packed into 300 square feet. And then, and he helps do the work too. He has a food card and everything. But he also does everything from home and I find that when I back off and let him just do it, he does it better than when I jump in. So when I talk to other teachers or other parents that are, you know, if they ask for advice or whatever, I just say, that's what I say is maybe back off and let them take it for a little bit. Let them figure it out and then wait till the loud grunts start and then jump in and then it seems to go good. But, um, yeah, that, I like those interaction Zooms and even if we went back to a regular whatever that's going to mean later on for school, if we were in person, I would love to see those Zooms constantly. And I think I've said that before. Or not constantly, but like set up times and just again, love that. So, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Leanna. Art?
Thank you. First just to say welcome to our new board members, student board members, and I'm really glad to have you with us. Otherwise, I have very little to report. I've just been keeping up on articles and research and that sort of stuff online as best I can. Unfortunately, it's not been as good as, as much as I'd like because the smoke has messed up with the satellite, which is how I get internet with the Girl Scout computer that I have, but not the school computer. The school computer that I have is usually worse than the satellite, but right now it's better. Anyway, that's mostly what I've been doing is keeping up with research. I have had a contact with a person from the community and I've referred them to the proper sources for the issue they had. And I also had one contact from a community member interested in becoming a replacement board member for us. And that's it. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Art. And I don't have a whole lot to report other than Dana has been keeping us informed about how the school opening has gone and the meetings that the administration has been having to to basically fall back and regroup and build a new agenda and then fall back and regroup. And it's been kind of an interesting time, I think, for them. I really applaud all of their efforts and I'm anxious to hear how our enrollment is shaping up. So I'll wait until I get that from our superintendent. So now we are at consent items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as given.
Okay, thanks, John. Is there any, any comments, any discussion?
I do. Nothing to pull off the agenda or whatever, but just on the consent agenda, there's a whole lot of policies and I just wanted to say that some of them are taken on, some of them are being removed, some of them are whatever, the whole process of condensing them into a different format and the issues they're dealing with, I've been real favorable to see that happening and I'm glad to have that, have a chance to be, you know, review that sort of stuff. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Art. I was really sorry to see the School Resource Officer policy completely removed. It's in our current financial situation. I, I understand that that's probably the best way to deal with that. Ever we can bring it back, then maybe we could revisit that. Anything else anywhere in the consent agenda that anyone wants to?
Yeah, I'm not changing. I just wanted to comment that I like how some of the stuff is rewritten. It is more clear and concise and more maybe technical. It looks a little bit better than some of the rewording of things. It looked really nice. So, kudos.
Thanks, Leanna. All right, if there's no more discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. John?
Yes, yeah, for it.
Art?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
I vote aye and that consent agenda is approved and passed. Okay, now we are at three Athletic and Facility Director Presentations and welcome to Alexa, Alexia?
Yep, we have Alexia Hadfield, known as Lexi, and Joan Moore here, each to tell us a little bit about what's going on in their areas of responsibility. The specific area for Lexi tonight is athletics and facilities for Joan, so we'll begin with Lexi.
Good evening. So the state of athletics is kind of set in sand with the tide coming in and out. WIA has a schedule. Our league has schedules drafted to fit their WIA's new four-season sport calendar for this year. As soon as they are approved by the state, I will get those published. And we are looking to start with season two starting December 28th with basketball, wrestling, and cheer. However, two of those sports cannot play games until Phase Four Plus. So I anticipate our season's changing some more, so we're learning to be flexible. We're working on our COVID guidelines for a safe return to play for all our players and coaches and then eventually spectators. And, yeah, I think that's it. We're kind of in a state of hurry up and wait.
I think I'm going to say, really kudos to Lexi. She's new to this role and she stepped into it in, in a really awful time to try to manage a sports calendar for kids when we don't know when and if they're going to get to do things. And she's done amazing work coordinating with the league, with the state, working with the coaches, doing her best to ensure that as soon as we're allowed, our kids will have the opportunities. So Lexi, I want to thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Our goal is to, once we get the go, is to be able to go immediately and not have to wait for policies to be approved.
Okay, so you are not prac, nobody is practicing or meeting?
Nope. Um, we are, we're following the Department of Health guidelines and we will not have any facilitated practices until we're under that 25 number. Whether our kids are out doing things on their own, I, I don't know. We have coaches sending out some virtual things and holding virtual meetings with their players to have that social emotional connection.
Okay.
We're, we're doing what we can in a virtual setting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Joan?
Well, good evening, everybody. Excuse my voice. I have asthma and with this weather, it's not, the smoke is not great for me. Um, so in our COVID prep, our, the safety of our and the health of our students and staff is at the utmost. So, our, we're following all the preparation and guidelines that we haven't been given. Through our HVAC system, we bring in 10% air and we're using the top-of-the-line quality filters, which are M13s. Those are what were recommended and we were already using those in our district, so kudos to us for that. We have, we change them every three months. We've been doing that, so we're keeping in the guidelines in regards to that. We have signage all over our district age-appropriate for our little kiddos so they can understand. In fact, in the handouts that we provided for you, you can see we even have a superhero for them in regards to keep washing their hands and everything, so trying to relate to them. We have a school spirit all throughout our school with our six-foot social distancing. We have blue and white paw prints everywhere you can look at outside. So when our kids are ready to school, come back to school, we can make sure that we are socially distancing outside. And our custodial, we have a very high priority list that we have for cleaning and our staff is doing an awesome job. It's quadrupled their work in regards to making sure all high points are taken care of. And so they have to do that anywhere between four to six times a day. So we have switched our custodial staff. We do not have any more night staff. We brought them down and our latest is usually in, leaning by six. Um, any, we have sign-in sheets at all our schools, so anybody who is in a room gets a full cleaning. Um, so our custodial staff is checking that and making sure everything is done. All rooms are getting their high points done. We are working very closely with our staff and our principals in regards to their needs. And again, our most priority is our staff and students to come back safely.
Any questions for Joan?
I just also went to men Joan. She has been at the forefront of our safety committee in researching exactly what guidelines are out there and what we need to follow in getting the right PPE and materials into our hands and working with Ashley and some other staff to bulldog some of that those materials when they are available because everybody's trying to buy them. The prices are going really high or they're not available and they're finding those deals and getting them into our district. So thank you again, Joan, for that.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Now you can go home, I guess, if you want to.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at number four, Resolution 19G20, Suspension of Policy. Would you like to speak to that, Dana?
Yes, you'll remember, we took a similar resolution in the spring when we closed down for the initial closure of schools due to COVID-19. What this suspension of policy does, and it's something that we kind of talked about last week or last month in relation to our policy governance policies, is this is a blanket policy that gives us permission. We were giving ourselves permission to suspend those policies that do not apply in this emergency environment and not have to hold, not hold ourselves accountable for things. Of course, still remaining with all legal guidelines and following all the rules and regulations of the state, but being able to suspend or amend those policies without having to take each one individually and do that to make them fit within the environment that we're working in.
Okay, thank you. I, I would ask you to just let us know which of those policies are being suspended at the time, just to keep us keep us informed. I know you were going to do that anyway. So now, if there are any questions, I would, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman, I move that we approve.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Um, when we make a change to suspend it, can we make a like a temporary change on the policy itself that goes out, that the public can see? That we can make like an in-red across it saying this policy is on whatever, just still it's?
We will announce if we're not following a policy or why we're doing something different. For example, um, one that we did last year and we'll do again this year is the 27 credit requirement for our seniors. As it was last year, it will be decreased to the state minimum, state minimum of 24 credits. And that, that's the, really the only one right now that we've taken a look at changing as a result of the current environment that we're in, but we will do that again for this year's seniors.
And we can make a note of it, like if somebody went and looked for that, we can make a note in like red or whatever, whatever, but a note so that when people look, there's not a question of, is that changed or not? It just shows?
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
It could also be covered just in the school board minutes if you may, if you put on that at the regular meetings. And that would be available for anybody to see or hear. Okay, no more discussion. I'll take a roll call vote. Leanna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And I vote aye and the Resolution 19G20, Suspension of Policy is approved. And now we're at number five, amended Resolution 16G20 for final acceptance of the Hawkins Middle School renovation addition project.
Well, of course, it seems like this was a long time ago that we completed this project, but as you know, the process of getting all the Ts crossed and Is dotted at the state level takes a really long time. And so I will just ask Ashley to speak to this briefly, but we are finally in the position to say, yes, this project is completely done and completely accepted. Ashley?
So we're working on closing out the Hawkins project, like Dana was talking about. While one of my accountants were going through all the paperwork in order to close out the project, they found a mistyping on one of our resolutions back from 2019. We had two contracting vendors with similar names that were working on both the high school and middle school project. Unfortunately, when the resolutions came to the board, they came to the board during the same meeting and the same contractor's name was put in both. So we need to amend the Hawkins Resolution so that it has the correct contractor's name so that we can go ahead and close the project. So the only change to that is literally the name of the contractor that was working on the project.
Okay, thanks, Ashley. Any more questions? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve amended Resolution 16G20.
Thank you, Art. Any more discussion? We have a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And I vote aye and the resolution is passed. And now we are at, we have to take action on our Board Director resignation letter from Craig Patty. And I'll read it to you. It's just very short and sweet for somebody who did so much and really gave more than his share to the school districts. Dear President, Bod, please accept this email as my resignation from the Board of Directors for the North Mason School District effective this day, August 21st, 2020. Upon receipt of this email respectfully, Craig Patty. Craig was instrumental in Pat, working on and passing the bond that built all of these facilities here along with Mike Young. And he was also extremely effective down in Olympia, working as our legislative rep, and he will definitely be missed here. So I will accept a motion to accept his resignation.
So moved with regrets.
Thank you, Art. Okay, roll call vote. John? John, are you there? Okay, Leanna?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I vote aye and his resignation is accepted. So now we will need to elect a board vice president according to our policy. And I would like to nominate John Campbell to fill that vacancy for board vice president. Are there any other nominations?
A second thought.
Okay, thanks. We don't need a second, but thanks, Leanna.
I'm just nominating.
Okay.
I want to be part of it.
I know, I getcha, I getcha. Um, okay, so oh, this nomination must have a second. You are so right. Thank you. So then I'll close the nominations and take a roll call vote. I vote aye for John Campbell. Art?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
And John? John, you went away?
I think he keeps freezing momentarily.
He does. John? No. Well, we have three. That's, that's the majority. So he is the board vice president. We'll let him know when he shows up. So now we're at Board Development and Linkage, the superintendent update.
I will begin with the budget status report. During her report, Ashley is going to touch on enrollment and later during my report, we'll talk about the implications there.
Okay, first, I just want to give you guys. My, my internet connection seems to be a tad bit unstable, so if you guys do have a question, you guys are freezing and it tends to come in a bit delayed, so bear with me with that. It's the wonderful world of Zoom. Okay, so we're going to start with our other funds at this point. So if you guys remember from past years, I'm, I'm reporting on August, but I'm going to end up reporting on August now and then again over the next two months because we are in an accrual-based school district. Costs that were encumbered or incurred during the month of August or in last fiscal year that end up being expended during the months of September or October. We still accrue back to August during the, the fiscal year that the expense actually took place. So these are, these are basically sort of a snapshot in time as of the date that the reports were prepared. So capital projects were currently sitting at about $727,000 in this fund. Again, we're going to see this fund pretty much deplete itself over this current fiscal year, 2021, which is to be expected. The money that is left in capital projects, technically, none of it is bond funds. Most of it was interest earned off the bonds and then there's some state forest revenue in there as well. So this money is, that's left is being used to finalize our four projects that we currently have open but are nearing their end stages prior to completion. Our debt service fund is currently sitting at about 1.25 million, which is sufficient for a year-end balance to carry funds over to next year to pay our both voted and non-voted debt. ASB fund is down to about 394,000. I do anticipate to see the ASB fund start to decrease over the course of this year without seeing those increases from revenues coming in. I don't anticipate a huge amount of fundraising to be occurring during the, the school being shut down to student interactions in-house. Our transportation vehicle fund for August 31st at that time was, it currently ended at $180,000. We did have a our new bus that we've been anxiously awaiting its arrival did arrive yesterday, in fact. And so we've made payment on that and that dropped our fund balance at this point for transportation vehicle fund to about $40,000. But we do have a brand-new large bus to add to our fleet, so that is some positive and happy news. If we want to scroll to the second page, this is where I'm going to be touching on enrollment. Again, I'm just going to touch on it and Dana will go into specifics. So we've updated the chart to show the orange is where we had budgeted. Now, when we budgeted enrollment, we were budgeting the enrollment prior to knowing obviously the full impacts of the pandemic and COVID on our student population. So orange is budget and that blue is where we are at actually trending for the month of September. So Dana will give more details about that in a little bit. So if you want to jump over to our general fund presentation, Jackie? Do you guys have any questions about that, the other funds though by chance? Okay.
No.
So this is the exciting one. So this is a snapshot of where we're sitting at at year end, technically, prior to some of those accruals taking place. Revenues, technically, at the end of any fiscal year, you expect to be at 100% of the revenues you budgeted for. We're currently sitting at 102.11%, or about 2.11% over our budgeted revenues. Our local sources are sitting at about 10.61% over budget. State sources are just over 3% over budget. And our federal is technically under budget at this point. There's a lot of federal regulations going on right now regarding what can be claimed due to the shutdown last March. So we're still working on getting some of that cleared prior to final claims being made. Claims for last fiscal year against last fiscal year expenses can still be claimed for federal purposes through October. So you are going to see that air when future months presentations change. Okay, we want to go on to expenses. This is my favorite one. Okay, so we have board policy that requires us to sit with a fund balance of somewhere between eight to 10% of our yearly budgeted expenditures. We're currently sitting at about 9.74% fund balance at this point for the beginning of the year. That's a healthy place for us to be at. Again, I touched on it a bit last month, but because of the change in how the state is funding school districts, our highest revenue apportionment months are now June and or July and August. This means that we end the fiscal year with more money and then as the year progresses, it decreases again until basically the state's fiscal year starts over, which is July 1st. So we are currently sitting and trending within that eight to 10% range, which is required by board policy. Our projected year to date expenditures, it looks like we're half a percent over budgeted. Now you can see your projected year to date expenditures was actually at 101.26. That was based upon what was originally budgeted. So we're actually coming in for under what our budget expenditures would actually have been. The top 10 expenditures year to date, some of this will end up changing based upon accruals. But overall, there was nothing completely out of the ordinary as far as our actual expenditures this year other than the fact that our supply purchases regarding PPE and such did have a fairly significant impact to our, what would be considered like our M-SOC, our material and supply purchases for the year. I was running some reports today for Dana and we've spent about $771,000 on COVID related purchases or payroll or things that just weren't anticipated when we were planning the 1920 budget because we didn't expect a pandemic. So we're sitting at just under three quarters of a million dollars related to those expenditure expenditures specifically. So the fact that we're still trending between eight and 10% for our fund balance, that that does go a long way as far as what we've been able to do as a district. Okay, on to the next page.
To note there, we've been very careful and Ashley has been really instrumental in this in taking advantage of the federal dollars available to us in the CARES Act and then husbanding the dollars in the district very, very carefully. So yes, we've had to reallocate things from some previous plans in order to make sure that we can respond effectively to the COVID crisis. But I want to give kudos to Ashley and to the rest of the leadership team for working on this throughout the summer as well.
Ashley, how much CARES Act money did we get?
So, okay, so we were allocated 491,000. So we have not claimed that full 491,000 because there were some hoops to jump through prior to claiming. So I'm getting ready to do our first claim against those funds this month. When those revenues come in, they come in but offset 1920 expenses. So that revenue gets accrued back to last year. So you'll see our revenues for last year also increase.
And then that will impact.
But exactly, exactly. So but the the staff over the summer and over the spring, they, like Dana was talking about earlier, we saw PPE prices skyrocket with the pandemic. I mean, bottles of hand sanitizer, a six to eight ounce bottle was going for 12.99 when you're having to get hundreds of those to stockpile for back to school purposes. That we simply couldn't afford those prices, but we were required to obviously have them. So we had multiple staff watching couponing blogs and couponing websites, looking for the best deals. And the second they get posted, you know, there'd be six, seven of us on our computers ordering our quantities to try to get it in the door at a cheaper price. So we were successful in that though. So that's good. Okay, so month end balances, you can see our chart looks a little funky. All year long, we've been trending under all of the prior years. Again, a huge impact for this district was the the fact that the the state changed our apportionment schedule. We just weren't getting the money during the school year. And then you can see how our solid blue line spikes during the summer. They basically backloaded our funding. And so now we got the funding that we were needing during the school year at the end of the school year. It does put us in a better position going into 2021, especially due to the loss of the levy during the months of May and June. It's two of our lowest apportionment months. And the reason why the state has those as so low as far as funding goes is because they expect for you to use your local levy dollars to help supplement your expenses during those two months. We won't have that local levy to help supplement those expenses. So if we can't draw into our fund balance, we wouldn't be able to pay bills. So that's why you're seeing that number sit there at about 3.3 million dollars right now. And you will hopefully see, as long as everything goes well, you're going to have to to see that fund balance stay up there in order to ensure that we can make payroll and vendor payments come May and June. So that green triangle is where we had budgeted to end the year was at 2.8 million. So we're currently sitting at 3.3 million. Next screen. Okay, so this is, this is a little bit more detailed approach to all of our, what would be considered our basic end funding and where we're ending the year. So obviously, we like to see a lot of black, not so much red. But what we are ideally wanting to see is that bottom number, the 1.683 million. You want to see that in black. That means that we brought in more revenue than we spent during the course of last year, which was obviously our goal since we needed to add to our fund balance. We were successful in doing so. So that that has been really good. The $389,000 you're seeing there, that was due to that curriculum purchase due to the timing of when the materials arrived. They technically arrived during the 2020 or 1920 school year versus the 1819 school year when the purchase was budgeted. Therefore, even though it was budgeted in the prior year, the expense had occurred in this year, which is why you're seeing the red. Do you guys have any questions regarding the detail?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's all I have on this. Are there any other questions regarding the finances or where we're currently ending August 31st, first as of today?
I do have a question about the technology, the devices that we were giving students. What is that in here somewhere? And did we have to, is that that $95,000 that's red in technology? Okay, so we.
No. Um. So we have made so. Oh, I'm sorry. We have made, I'm sorry, it's the delay on my computer. Um, we, we've made, so our computer purchase, we broke into three payments. We've made one payment. It, you will see it be accrued back to 1920. But we made that payment here on the 15th, so it's not being reflected in the numbers currently. But though the cost of our computers is being reimbursed through our CARES Act funding that I will be requesting reimbursement on Monday and we should get that revenue here at the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ashley? Okay, thanks, Ashley, for all your hard work again.
You're welcome.
Teaching and learning update.
Yes, so we'll start by talking about the enrollment a little bit. You saw from Ashley's report that we're down from what we projected. We're up from last year. At the same time, we're right around 2,222, give or take right now. Without counting our running start kids, when we get our running start kids in, we'll be closer to 2290 or almost 2300. And we budgeted at 2329, Ashley? Yeah, so so we're, we're down a little bit. It's not unexpected and it's not unusual. When we talk with our neighboring districts, some of them, many of them are down a whole school as many as 500 students, 400 students, 200 students. So right now being down 80 to potentially 30, when we get all is told, is feeling pretty good, but it also means that we're going to have to be very careful within our budget and our resources and and look at everything that we do to do it in the most cost effective way possible. We also, the state has recognized that this year is really unusual with everybody learning remotely. And I know for us in our district, because of the remoteness of where some of our folks live and the lack of access to connectivity, we are still connecting with and finding some kids who haven't gotten quite connected to school yet. So we expect some continued fluctuation in a positive manner in our enrollment. But the state of Washington OSPI has recognized that it's not as easy as in other years. So the rules that we've had around doing the first official count on the fourth day of the school year have been kind of changed. Districts have been told they can do their official count anytime up until September 23rd. And it can be amended anytime up until October 1st for that September count. So it will still continue to fluctuate a little bit and we'll probably have a much better feel of where we actually are in enrollment as we hit the October year. Related to that, rules around attendance, as you saw in the policy that was included in the the earlier part of the meeting in the consent agenda, rules around attendance and how we count attendance have been changed for this year. And part of that rulemaking is that we're not going to mark kids unexcused absence for any kind of turancy purposes until it, until October 4th as a state. And being considered absent for turancy purposes, I have to move, my light just went off. Being considered absent for turancy purposes is going to be very, very difficult this year because students are considered attending if they're enrolled and if they're engaged in the learning process. And that can mean signing on for the live classes, showing that they've done work for the recorded classes, getting their work done in some way or another and work and connecting with their teachers. So it's it's much different than your seat being in a chair every day. And it's much more dependent on our staff and our kids communicating with each other. So it will be very interesting for the year. So that's part of what's going on with teaching and learning. We have gotten off to a pretty solid start. We expected some hiccups with starting with all remote learning. And of course, we had some. Vendors were having to provide materials and applications for districts and kids across the country and some, and so there were some backups and getting some of the things out to kids as quickly as we wanted them to due to vendor issues. But things are up and running in almost all cases now. There may be a couple of kids or something that we still need to correct things for. And we are asking families when when they're running into problems to let us know right away so we can get those things corrected. We are also taking a really careful look at the idea of educational justice, which is very important at the state level and in our region particularly. And what that means is, in this case, how are kids being impacted negatively in their access to an educate free, free education here in the United States of America by the crisis? And so we're taking a look at identifying which kids in our district are furthest from educational justice. Because the, we are empowered under the Department of Health and state guidelines and working with our county health departments. Even though we're, we're in a place where it's really not recommended that we have all kids back in school right now, we need to start looking at who really cannot be learning from home. And those would be the first cohort of kids that come back to school buildings in person. So we're beginning the planning process on that by really identifying who are the kids across our district, K through 12, who are furthest from that educational justice, who have the least opportunity to access their public education. And those will be the kids that we identify and we're planning to bring in first in an initial cohort. We will expand from there. You'll remember that we set up a six step plan to returning to in-person learning. And we will expand from there and then at some point start with bringing in our youngest learners and then more and more in a hybrid model. As long as the science allows us to, the levels of disease in our two counties stays within the moderate to low range. As Lexi mentioned earlier, we have different restrictions for different activities for kids. So participation in some sports or in all activities requires us to be in the low range. Right now, we're in Mason County and in Kitsap County in the high end of the moderate range in an average over the past two weeks. For this week alone, we actually bumped back up into the high range in Mason County so far. So we're hoping those numbers come back down so we can stay in the moderate section. But we will continue to work with our partner in Mason, our partner districts in Mason County and in Kitsap County to plan for return to in-person learning for kids where appropriate and when it's safe. And we also know though, that as part of this transition and the work that we've done this year, our staff and our kids are learning new skills. And when we return in person, it's probably always going to be impacted in and in very different ways by the experience that we've had. We talked for years about wanting to get to a place where we could put computers in all of our kids' hands and be in a one-to-one learning environment. Well, guess what? The COVID crisis forced that and we are. And we'll need to maintain that as we move forward. Now that means right now we have distributed those computers to kids all over the district for their use for learning. When we bring them back to school, we actually have to make some changes in our infrastructure for all those computers to be turned on in our school buildings at the same time and be working. So it will be something that we talk about in the future. I know Clint is pursuing some grant funding to support that work and it's very positive for us. But you know, it's a change that we jumped into and and to meet the needs of our kids and we'll have to come and do some backfilling. So we had a parent forum yesterday at one and another one in the evening. They weren't as strongly as attended as our parent forums that we had over the summer. But as we discussed at the last board meeting, we'll continue to hold those throughout the year. It is a really good way to communicate with at least some of our families and get a pulse for where people are and what's going on. And we held the forums yesterday to specifically ask what's working and what's not. And we received some really good feedback from families, some really good suggestions that they wanted to share with their colleague families about what's working for them and some things that we can work on to improve this delivery model for kids. So that's kind of the state of teaching and learning right now.
All right, thank you. That's, that's the state of it. All right. So let's go to anything more on capital projects? Kind of covered that already, I think.
Well, we are finishing up all four projects and we would be finished with the stadium a year ago, but or almost a year ago in February, but we had a little bit more electrical work to do on the scoreboard when everything was closed down. And we haven't gotten those electricians to be able to come back to finish that yet. And so as soon as they do, we'll be able to report that is good to go for when we get to use it for our stadium sports. And so as soon as they do, we'll be able to report that is good to go for when we get to use it for our stadium sports. The softball field is nearing completion and really is going to be a beautiful addition to our facilities for kids. I'm so proud that we are able to do that. We have a brand-new roof at Sand Hill and it is beautiful and it will keep all that water out of the buildings. And we are just finishing the last of the work or have finished the last of the work of the installation of the portable for our early entrance kindergarten classes at Theller. So they're all coming to a close and that's pretty exciting.
Well, hopefully, when they all are complete, all of our kids can come back to school. Yeah, nice. All right, so we have upcoming board letter columnist will be Leanna. You have September. And she just worked with Dana on what, on subjects to cover for that. And then I have October and Art has November. So now we're at Assurance of Organizational Performance and Policy. Our monitoring reports this time, our ER6 facilities. And the monitoring report is attached in the facility policy says the executive requirement is that the superintendent shall ensure that district facilities are adequate, safe, clean, inviting, and conducive to teaching and learning. Therefore, the superintendent shall develop and maintain a continual 20-year plan for developing and modernizing facilities, develop and maintain a continual five-year plan for managing and developing facilities, involve key stakeholders in the process of establishing attendance line adjustments, and provide an annual report to the board, which is this monitoring report. Have you all had an opportunity to read the monitoring report? You can unmute now. I would entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Your back art or John, you can unmute.
He did, he said so moved.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion, any comments? Okay, the monitoring report that the superintendent prepared falls right into line with all of the expectations that we have here. And there is a recommendation to find that the superintendent's performance complies with ER6. Any more discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Art?
Aye.
Leanna? John? Unmute, John.
Oh, all right. Hey, aye.
All right, I vote ayes and the motion passes. And now we are at ER7, Asset Protection. Asset protection is the executive requirement that the superintendent shall ensure that assets are protected, adequately maintained, appropriately used, and not unnecessarily risked. Accordingly, the superintendent shall take steps to ensure that a program of preventative maintenance is in place for district facilities and equipment, conduct energy assessments and to make modifications which result in energy savings, implement and monitor an inventory system assuring proper tracking of district physical assets. Further, the superintendent may not recklessly expose the district, its board, or staff to legal liability and knowingly or recklessly endanger the district's public image or credibility, thereby jeopardizing the district's ability to accomplish its mission. And the monitoring report speaks to each one of those requirements. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
I think Dana's done a good job of keeping us out of trouble.
I think she has too.
I would like to point out in the, over the last year, Ashley, Joan, Maureen, the various classified administrators have worked really hard on taking a look at our assets, cleaning out inventory of of things that have been here for 40 years that we haven't used and hadn't inventoried properly when we got them. And I'm really making sure we know exactly what we do have and it's stuff that we need. And so I want to point out that they've really been focused on cleaning up our inventory and making sure that it's accurate and it's stuff that we need.
Okay, thank you and thank them for us. All right, I'll entertain a motion to find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER7.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we find the superintendent's performance to be compliant with ER7.
Thank you, Art. Is there any more discussion? All right, roll call vote, John?
Aye.
Leanna? Art?
Aye.
And I vote aye and the motion passes. And now we are at policy review and these policies we discussed and voted on last month. ER1, Expectations of the Superintendent, ER4, Budget Planning, ER3, Treatment of Parents Test and the Public and the Board Superintendent Relationship Policies. You have anything else that you would like to discuss regarding these policies? Okay, then we'll move on to adjournment. Good of the Order, the Board and the Superintendent. And we'll also ask our student representatives if they have anything for the Good of the Order. So let's start with Aleah. John, do you want to mute your screen? John, mute your screen, okay. Do we have Aleah? Can't get her. Okay, how about you, Desiree? Do you have anything? Unmute.
No, I don't.
Okay. Leanna?
I don't either.
Okay, Leanna?
I almost answered for Leanna. Oh, no, I think I'm good.
Okay, Art?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, John? John, unmute your screen.
Okay, I'm fine. I had to move around because I was running out of juice, so.
I see. But I'd like you to know that while you were moving around or something happened, you were voted to be the vice president.
I am honored by this privilege and I hope to be able to exercise the job with in accordance with the laws of the state of Washington and the US Constitution.
Wonderful, thank you. And I don't have anything else to add except for I feel like it has been kind of a a soft school opening, not terribly upsetting for a lot of people. So maybe we're falling into some kind of a routine here, I hope. Maybe I'm just being a Pollyanna about it, but I also really hope that all of this air will clear up and the COVID night team will go away and we can now learn how to be people again in a normal setting. So other than that, do you have anything, Superintendent Rollenbach? You have to unmute Dana.
Now it was my turn. I do want to add that I, and as I shared with parents last night, we are now beginning the planning stages of looking at bringing in a small cohort of students first and then moving and hopefully expanding into our hybrid model in person at some point. I can't tell you when yet, but sometime, some point in this fall/winter timeframe.
Awesome. Okay, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? We have
Yes, one more thing, there's the board self-assessment, which I have to give.
Well, you jumped ahead of me. I was just going to say now we have Director Whitman processing the board's self-assessment.
Great. Other than a few technical difficulties, I'm going to rate everything as satisfactory in both the categories that you board members know what they all are. Anyone who's watching or needs to know this, otherwise you can go to the the school district's website and ask for the board's self-assessment. And you can see a form that we fill out, that I'm actually filling out for all of our board meetings and then you can find out a lot more about it. It's very boring to try to describe it, however, anything more than this. So anyway, I'm writing it down as overall satisfactory, minus technical issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Our next board meeting date is October 15th at 6:30 probably on the Zoom remote meeting channel. So I thank you all for being here and welcome again to our student board representatives and the meeting is adjourned. Now you can all push that little leave red button.